Good evening Wakefield. I am going to call to order the town council meeting of Monday, January 27th, 2025 at 7:02 PM. Please join me, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I see that we have all seven councilors in attendance tonight. Item four on the agenda is public engagement. Sherri, do we have any public engagement this evening?
We do not have public engagement tonight.
Okay then. The, um, I'm going to go past item five because we have a couple of special guests in the building and I know they would love to sit through all of our presentations and budgets, but I'm gonna have to deprive them of that and I'm gonna move item.
They could sit through it by choice.
Well, they can and I'm sure they will. Item 7A is common victual or an entertainment license for Inspire Cafe of 411 Main Street. And anybody attending on that, if you could come up, take a seat, state your names and addresses and present as you will.
My name is Tara Kelly and I live at 3 Patriot Lane in Georgetown, Massachusetts.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Marie Ray, 25 Montclair Avenue, Wakefield.
Welcome Marie. And you are here tonight on behalf of Inspire Cafe?
We are and we are here to answer any questions you may have before you make the final decision on what we think is the final license required before we can open the doors. I just want to take the opportunity again to thank all of you for the support you've given Inspire and the whole town of Wakefield. The social media has been really, really positive. So we're excited, we're very close and yeah, we're just waiting for this last box to be checked off.
Yeah, we're ready when you guys are.
I think we're excited too. Any of the councilors have any questions? Councilor Buck?
I'm so excited. Can you, can you just remind people location and hours? And have you hired folks? Are you all ready to go as soon as you get this? We'd just love to hear a little bit of, because I want to know when.
So we're located at 411 Main Street in Wakefield. It's where the old bread shop was, in case anyone's familiar with that address. We are gonna be open Wednesday through Saturday from 7:30 to 4:00 and then Sundays from 8:30 to 2:00. And we are fully staffed, everyone is trained and we are ready to open. We are just waiting for our final licensing approval and we are gonna be announcing our opening date. So we're very excited to be opening our doors in Wakefield and again are just so, so thankful for the support we've received from you guys. We couldn't have picked a better town to be a part of. So we're just so thankful for everything.
Councilor Dombrowski?
I'll say, I think this is going to be a transformational business for our downtown. I am incredibly excited about it and the opportunities that it's creating for residents of our community and those beyond. And I know it's going to be a real draw for a lot of our region, which is really exciting and so I can't wait for it. And I've really enjoyed your social media presence and following all the trainings, you know, that have been online and the bios of all the staff. It's been really exciting to see. And this is, you're, you're really weaving yourself into the fabric of this community in such a unique, positive and important way. And I can't wait for the doors to open. So I wish you just the best of luck.
It's been transformational for the staff. This is just an opportunity that many of them have not had before. In particular for my son, I mean, he's just really thriving there, doing a lot of things there that I've never seen him done at home. So hopefully he can make that transition. But yeah, we're, we're just really excited and I hope we are a draw for the other businesses in town as well. And yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't have picked a better place. You know that I'm, I am ingrained in the fabric here in Wakefield.
And your media coverage has been great so far too.
Well, we, and once we, you know, can announce our opening, we hope that that, you know, really steps up as well, so.
Very exciting.
Thank you again.
Any other councilors? Okay, this is the time I check with the boss. Sherri? Is everything in order, Sherri?
Yes, everything is in order.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the common victuals and payment license for Inspire Cafe located at 411 Main Street.
I enthusiastically second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is 7-0 Sherri. Thank you all for showing tonight.
Stay tuned to your social media.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And 7B Steve is, no one's here for that. That's just gonna be the paperwork, right? So should we finish that or?
I would, so we don't miss it.
Okay, let's, let's go to 7B then.
It's a class two non-display renewal. As the council knows is that, you know, where a liquor license or common vic license or entertainment license, you know, they expire at the end of the year. On these class twos that people just want to go to the auctions, basically, they may not. So they, they, you know, come in when they want it, if they want to do it. So that's why they, it's a couple strippers. Hopefully this will be the last one.
And everything in order on this, Sherri?
Yeah, everything is in order.
Okay. Any questions or comments from councilors? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the class two renewal request for all state truck sales at 117 New Salem Street.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's 7-0 Sherri. Now, turning back to item five, we have presentations and updates. We have town council regulations and policies. I believe this came from the request of Councilor Vincent, so I am therefore going to turn it over to Councilor Vincent.
Thank you Chairman McLean. This is something that Sherri and I sat down and worked on together. Sherri, if you can go to the third slide. These first two things would never require any town council action, but this is the town of Wakefield website and you'll see where it's town council. It used to be if you wanted to look at the town council approved policies and procedures, you had to go to the search engine on the town website. If you actually went to town council, policies wasn't mentioned there. So if you look at the bottom left side of that document on the screen, you'll see where it says policies and trust. So now when you go to the town council website, whether you're a member of the public or a member of the council, you go to the town council website, policies and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund are listed on the left, bottom left side and you click on that. And then Sherri, if you can go to the next slide. Once you click on that, the change that was made in the old system, when policies would show up, it would have a link up at the top to the charter on Ecode and the Wakefield bylaws on Ecode only. And then it would list the nine standalone town council approved regulations as you see there in alphabetical, I guess that's alphabetical order. The change that we made where the arrow is pointing is we've now added Ecode Division Two Town Council Regulations as a link. That takes you to the three that are on Ecode Division Two, hawkers and peddlers, alcoholic beverages and traffic rules and orders. So now it's a lot easier for members of the public, the council, to go on the town website to find the 12 delineated town council approved policies and procedures, the nine listed there in alphabetical order, and then the link to the three that are on Ecode Division Two. Sherri, if you then can go to any one of the other slides. So as far as the, this part of the presentation, and this is something that if the council is interested at some point in time in adopting, they could. But basically what this is, is there's 12 town council approved policies. There's 12 months in the year. We were contemplating having an annual review, one regulation or policy per month during the course of the year, where the town council has it on the agenda, takes a look at it, decides if there's any changes, modifications, questions, comments, things that they have. Why should we consider doing something like this? We don't have any orientation for new town council members. We don't have something that gives you a list of the policies and regulations. We go to an MA conference, which was a good thing for orientation, but we don't have one ourselves. We also don't have our own town council policy regarding powers, duties and obligations. There was a draft that was done somewhere around 2010, I believe Steve. At the time, the county board of selectmen decided they didn't want to adopt this, except for the public participation portion of it. That was adopted, the rest of this wasn't. And the council's never entertained looking at something like this again. So because we don't have some, and many other municipalities do have written policies, duties and obligations for the town council. But because we don't have an orientation and we don't have a policy like this, we thought that it might be prudent for the council to put their eyes on each regulation once a year. It also would help with the transition to a new town administrator. The town council becomes one of the subject matter experts on their own policies along with the town administrator and along with, of course, Mr. Mullin. And we also think that this improves effectiveness and efficiencies because when you, when you look at past practice, I'll give you two quick examples. Traffic rules and orders. There was a practice for many years where town council members would ask the town administrator, would you put up ducks crossing, children play signs? Or the traffic advisory committee would be the final approval authority for some traffic signs. That all makes sense, that's all prudent, but that does not comport with the traffic rules and orders regulation that's been on the books from 19, since 1961. It would be easy for the council to go and amend that and delegate that down to a town council member or to the traffic advisory committee. But sometimes those regulations are out of sight, out of mind and then you have a situation where there's a disconnect between what the regulations say and what the practice has evolved into. And, and the other thing that we noticed a couple of years back when we were looking to update the public participation policy, which came from this policy document I was talking about from somewhere around 2010. And when we were looking to update the financial policy, we didn't have the date on there when they were actually approved by the council. And Steve had to go and do some checking and found that one was passed in 2013 and the other one was approved in 2010. If the council was looking at the regulations on a regular basis, they would see that it accurately depicts when the town council actually approved that document. I'll say that I have, I haven't spoken with anyone on the council on this other than the chair to ask to put that on the agenda. But I will say that I've spoken with Mr. Mullin, who thought it was a good idea, with Kevin Gill, who thought it was a good idea. I know Steve, not to speak for Steve, he's sitting here, as is Mr. Mullin and Mr. Gill. I think Steve believes that, you know, on a periodic basis, looking at town council policies and regulations makes sense. So that's basically what would the review be? Before the meeting would be put on the agenda by the town council chair. Sherri would put the policy or the link of it up on GoVenda. Town council members would have a few days, like we commonly do, to look at the regulation before the meeting that it's gonna be discussed. What happens at the meeting? The chair asks if anyone has any comments, suggestions, questions or amendments. It could just be a one to two minute discussion or it could be a situation where somebody says, yes, I want to explore the possibility of amending this. You know, for instance, delegating the traffic rules and orders instruction as I talked about before. It's just something to think about. I'm not asking for anyone to vote on this. I don't intend to raise it for a vote. I just intend to, Sherri and I wanted to spend some time to kind of take a look at this overall situation and see if there is something that we could improve the effectiveness and the efficiency of the council. That's all I have. Since I don't intend to bring it up for any, any further action, I don't really know that we need any Q and A on it or anything. We can move on to the budgets. But thank you for giving me the time to make the presentation. Thanks Chair.
You're welcome. But I will ask if any of the councilors have any discussion that they would like to engage in. If not, we will move on. Councilor Charny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Councilor Vincent, for going through this. I, you know, I think as a principle, I think having a process to, you know, kind of periodically review policies makes sense. You know, certainly in, you know, the working world where I am, that is kind of part and parcel of a best practice. You know, to me, I don't know that we necessarily would need to vote on anything as much as, you know, kind of request whoever is serving as chair at the time to put items on the agenda. So I, I think this discussion is just a good reminder that we do have these in place and, you know, eyes on things that we do periodically make sense. Just the, the two things that I would want us to be mindful of, you know, in the future when we do review some of these things. You know, one is, I think we want to be, I would hope that future councils would be careful to provide appropriate deference to the prior councils that came up with some of these policies, right? You know, there's a lot of work that goes into these things. And, you know, while we always want to be flexible and assure that we're kind of evolving with the times, I think we also want to make sure that certainly in areas, areas like fiscal policy, you know, alcoholic beverage policies, there's value in consistency. And so I think it would behoove us, whoever is serving in the future, to keep that balance in mind. The other thing that I would say is I think there are certain areas of the policies where when we do review them, we'd want to bring in other boards, like the alcoholic beverages one is a good example. I would think that if we review that in the future, when we do review that in the future, you know, doing that, you know, in conjunction with the Board of Health would, would make sense. So just some thoughts, you know, really for kind of future consideration, you know, as we, as we think about these going forward.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Butler?
Sure. I like the idea of the checklist and of, of actually having a sort of standardized approach. I think given that our tenures are all three years, I do feel like maybe doing all of these once a month might be, it just might be a touch excessive. I might move that we get these 12 or 13 items done over the course of the three years. Just, I also don't like, you know, I'm not, there are some of these that are, some of these that are very hot button issues and some of these that are nonissues. So on the ones that are hot button and very like pointed issues, I'm not sure we want to re-legislate them every year. But, you know, given that they're hot button, maybe we do. So that's, that's my only take on it. And again, this isn't up for a vote. But I like, I like the idea of, you know, as, as a new counselor, I like the idea of us having a setup where it's relatively easy to get up and running. And thank you very much, Councilor Vincent, for setting all of these things up and making it in a much more easily digestible format than, than was previously done.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilor Vincent, thank you for your work on this. I think it's important that you highlight this. One thing that I think has come up again and again and undercurrent is that we as a council, I don't really believe have sufficient onboarding for new members of the council. I think this is but one example of that. But just in general, just understanding how, you know, once you come on board, what, what does that entail? What do we do? How do we do it? And so I think that's probably, you know, we have three seats open in April. There could potentially be three new members of this council. It's almost half, half this body potentially. And so I think the more we can think about ways in which we can have lasting, I guess like initiation or training, it would, it would be helpful because we really don't have that right now. You just kind of come in and you sit down at your first meeting and there you are. And then you just start voting. So probably part of a broader discussion and consideration for us as, as a body. But I do think it would benefit those that are coming on as our, our colleagues and ultimately our successors to be able to have that level of, of orientation that I think we, we don't really have, right? It's not been a practice as long as I've been, been a member of the council, but I think we should, I think it's a blind spot for us.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Seeing none and having nothing on the floor, I think we can move to item six. And thank you, Councilor Vincent, for your work on that. At, at the very least, it's a good review and I think it raises some good points for the future council to consider. Item six, fiscal year 2026 budgets. Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, town council members. Tonight we have 10 of the smaller budgets, town budgets. These 10 are up approximately 1.9% over the last fiscal year. And combined with the 11 that we talked to, talked about at our last meeting, the grand total of the increase is 0.9% over the last year. So good work by department heads so far. Jumping right in, the first budget we'll talk about tonight is the town treasurer's budget. We're recommending that this budget be increased $10,679 over the current fiscal year. The increase in personal services is $8,679. Includes a 3% increase for the town treasurer and contractually negotiated increases for members of the clerical union, which a contract has been settled. On the expense side, there was one small increase, $2,000 for printing and binding. This is for advertising, which we are required by law to advertise twice the tailings, which are stale checks that haven't been cashed. We advertise them in the item once a year. We're now required to do it twice a year. So that, that was the increase in the budget. Major expenses within this budget. There's a line item for tax title, $13,000. This is for attorney's fees and land court costs. This expense usually happens later in the spring. So currently there is no expense showing year to date. We do collect money in the treasurer's office for tax title. In fiscal '25 year to date, we've collected over $100,000. And last year we collected over $185,000. So we do bring in considerable, considerable amount of monies. Total budget request for fiscal '26 is $255,406.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions on this budget from the council? Councilor Butler?
Just one, in terms of the required printing and whatnot, what do towns that don't have a town paper do? So if the item was closed, what would we do? Like, how would we fulfill that requirement?
Area regional paper. It might be the global sign if you're.
So it could potentially be much more money.
Could be globe for some people, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've actually had to look into that about what it means to say publication in a, in a newspaper of general circulation. General doesn't necessarily mean heavily read in your area. It just means of general interest as opposed to numismatics today. You know, some kind of, some kind of specialty publication. So we would, we could get away with something like the, you know, the Worcester, I don't know what the Worcester paper is.
Gazette.
Gazette. But basically any newspaper that isn't highly specialized and has a decent publication.
So this is just a gift from the state house to newspaper publishers everywhere?
It has been.
It certainly can be looked at that way.
Any other questions on this budget? Councilor Dombrowski?
Thank you for this, Mr. Gill. The contractual services piece, I realize it's not a large dollar amount, but it is a, a significant percentage increase, 43.48%. Could you just, just speak to that on the first page?
The contractual services?
Yeah. Why that percentage?
That is the printing and binding. That, that's the advertising. So we're going up a couple thousand dollars.
I thought we, didn't we have printing and binding elsewhere though? Okay.
That next page is.
Got it.
What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I thought you were still.
No, I'm all good, no, no.
Still at it. All right.
Good tactic though, we like that.
Any other questions from councilors on this budget? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the Treasury Department budget.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I see no opposed. Sherri, that's 7-0. Budget number, number 18, fire alarm, traffic signals.
Yes, fire alarm budget. We're recommending that this budget be increased $5,489 over the current fiscal year. This department is responsible for the townwide fire alarm system, the town's traffic signals and also the town's dispatch equipment at both fire stations. We are increasing the personal services, $4,989 based on current year-to-date numbers. Also the same thing with materials and supplies. There's a small increase of $500, also due to year-to-date expense. Also within this department, they do maintain master fire alarm boxes at private businesses and we do charge a fee for that. There's a fee of $225 per box. There's 170 boxes approximately in town. So we collect approximately $35,000 annually from those inspections. The total budget request for fiscal '26 is $78,000.
Councilor Butler?
Why is, why are we increasing personal services to a flat even $50,000? Because it's just a portion of somebody's job, right?
Well, what I did was I looked at year-to-date expenditures and then added 3%.
Oh, you just doubled it and?
Basically, yes. That, where we are putting up more traffic signals and crossing signals, that they are very busy and you can, you can tell by year-to-date figures that.
So these are not salary?
They, they are salary, that they are actually workers at the fire department in their off hours, they, they handle the fire alarm, traffic signals.
So it's effectively overtime for the time that they spend working on the signals?
Right, but it's not, it's not an overtime rate based on.
Got it, but also, and obviously also not sitting in the fire department budget.
Exactly, exactly.
It's when they're out working on this. But they look like they're going over budget this year?
For materials and supplies?
No, for personal services.
It ebbs and flows depending on how, how busy they are. They, they usually do a lot of maintenance work in the late fall and then in the springtime, not over the winter. They, in the winter, they usually only do emergency work. So all the maintenance is done either beginning of the year or towards the end of the year.
Are you?
I'm all set.
Okay, there, yeah, Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Since we're talking in part about fire alarms and the importance of maintaining them, it's important to note that in 2024, the fire department responded to 4,725 emergency responses, which was up 300 from the amount that they responded to in 2023. So obviously it's imperative that we keep these things up and use whatever money is necessary to keep these systems functioning because of the frequency that they're getting used now. Thank you.
Councilor Carney?
Want to note that we're paying a flat time rate where the benefits is already covered. Where if you went out and hired someone from the outside, you'd get a loaded rate. So I mean, I, I think this has always worked out for the benefit of the town. It'd be cost effective and obviously having our local firefighters man it and do the job, who know that what they have to get done for public safety purposes. I think it's an excellent program.
Councilor Dombrowski, I'll get back to you there.
So, Mr. Gill, on this, when you were mentioning about installing, you're saying we have more signals and you eventually also mentioned that the private piece, I'm seeing like new, new construction, for instance, right? And then also the maintenance. Is the, does maintenance fall, like, of private buildings fall under the same purview? So when you're saying that, like, there's, there's more that's going on, there's more installed, there's more upkeep, if you will, that you're, you're talking about what we're seeing in public, in public spaces as well as private spaces?
That's correct.
And how, how is the revenue keeping pace with this, this additional cost? Because you're saying because there's more work involved, you know, like that we have this personnel, the personnel line item going up. Is the 38, like, considerably more than we had had a year or two ago on the revenue side of things, you know? Is that keeping pace?
That revenue is, is pretty much set because the master boxes that are at private businesses, those have been pretty steady. I think a lot of the construction now is more residential. So I don't think those would be covered here.
So we're going to continue to have, like, higher personnel demands, but not revenue increases commensurate with those demands? Am I understanding correctly?
Correct, that's correct. If there are pedestrian crossing, there's one right around the corner from the, over by Sullivan Playground, that there's a, a new pedestrian crossing sign. And I think I've also seen another one somewhere else in town. But as those spring up, you have to upkeep them, so.
Those are public, though.
Right.
Right.
So as, as more of those go in, there's more cost to maintain. So that's why you'd see the salary portion of this budget go up.
Okay. It just doesn't feel like we're adding that many more crossings. And I thought we also, I thought DPW is also involved with a lot of those. Like, I'm thinking by gas and light, for instance, on North Ave. We have those solar-powered crossings, I think a few of them actually on North Ave now when you think about it.
Yeah, we're, when they're not working, we're sending out Randy to fix them. This department has the expertise.
This department, this department is doing the fixing of them, all right?
And that's where that time is coming in.
Okay. So that's, this is just going to continue to have, we're going to continue to have a budget creep with this, though, it sounds like. Because if we're installing more of these and you're saying maintenance is going to require higher personnel.
I think the more that we have over the years, it is certainly possible that there'll be more upkeep and maintenance.
And that, when these private entities are paying, that's, that's the initial fee? And what happens beyond that?
It's a yearly fee.
It's a yearly fee they're paying, okay. It feels like that's something we should be looking at, too, because.
But that's on, that's mainly on big businesses. That's their master alarm. That's not the traffic stuff. But we can certainly look at that. I think we should look at really all fees.
Well, not just big business, but I'm thinking like Foundry, we have a lot of new construction going on, right?
Yeah.
This personnel is involved with making sure that everything is compliant, right? So like, would, would an apartment building on Foundry be paying this, this annual fee and having this oversight?
I don't.
But I don't think we're not doing, I'm not doing that work for them either, on their building.
Okay, so this is pretty much limited to the public spaces and some of the larger, commercial businesses?
Big alarms and things like that, yeah.
Okay. Because it just, it feels like that's just going to keep.
Non-residential.
Yeah.
But it is an area that has been over every year, it seems to be increasing.
Well, that's what, yeah, I mean, when you're looking at, I mean, we're not, it's not even close to break even. I understand it can't be because we're also talking about the public domain as well, right?
But we could, we could certainly look, I don't remember the last time we changed the master box fee. Why don't we take a look at that? It's been a few years, so.
And that's presumably larger businesses or top, commercial business property, who could probably better absorb that than the taxpayer, who's going to be paying a few thousand more for this personnel increase, right? Okay. If we could, I'd appreciate that.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to make sure, I mean, if what I'm hearing is correct, I mean, a lot of this is also stemming from the fact that, you know, like, we've increased the number of signalized crosswalks.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, obviously, we want to be very prudent, but, you know, being $5,000 over on staff cost, if it means that we've created safer crossings in town, I will make that trade-off every day. So I just, I want to be mindful that we, we don't, you know, sort of cut off our nose to spite our face in terms of trying to be really careful on a budget item that also does have a real, you know, kind of quality of life and safety impact for, for residents.
You're right.
Councilor Butler, did you have more?
Yeah, vaguely, I recall when we, we didn't, recently, not recently, last five years, we did some sort of global upgrade to the fire alarm system and the system on the lights. I guess I'm still confused. What are the firefighters doing when, like, the, the notion of it, that it's making us safer? What are they doing? Like, what's, what is the personal services involved here? And why does it need to be a firefighter that does it? I mean, are they there, like, is it truly just checking to see whether the alarm goes off?
Well, that, that's part of it, but the other part of it is that they are going out and we've rolled, before my time, the traffic signalization was rolled into this, too.
Yeah.
You had a firefighter, that it was a, you know, no extra Bennys, no extra, you know, it was an hourly rate when it was going on. So it's very efficient to do it this way rather than hire someone just for this position or hire a number of people. It's not just one person.
Okay. I guess that still doesn't answer what they do. What's involved in, like, like, what do they need to check? By the way, you want to talk about smallest budgets becoming the biggest question?
I'll, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you an answer. I'll give you an example. We had a, probably still have an ongoing problem with the traffic signal at North Ave and Prospect and Church.
Oh, yeah.
All right? Those traffic signals, you know, we have, this department here would coordinate, you know, changing that signalization with the MBTA in this case, because they're going to get involved because it's a railroad crossing. And they'd end up doing and working with some of the work. We have a problem that a car runs into a traffic light. We've had accidents at North Ave and Main, okay? These are the guys that go out and fix it. In those cases, we do charge back the auto company for their insurance. But that's more what they're doing to things like that.
Okay, so it is the, it's that specific. So there's only a few, it's not sending out random firefighters to do this.
No, 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 no. These, these are basically off-duty firefighters. They're off-duty, they do this as, as a side position.
Yeah.
It's pretty efficient.
Okay. And then what's going on with materials and supplies this year?
The, the control box at North Ave.
Okay.
And Prospect.
Okay, so that's why it's not a repeat recurrent, we don't think it'll happen again.
Right, right.
Okay.
How many years, Kevin, if you recall, since we've adjusted the fee?
Probably at least 10 years.
10?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something to look at.
Yeah.
Because growth begets growth and costs, our costs go up.
I think that's when we redid the loop. We did, we did, we did a looping 10 years ago, and I think that might have been it.
Okay. Just wanted to point that out, you know, that's, that's probably something to consider in the future. Any other questions from the councilors on this budget? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the fire alarm traffic signals budget as presented. Second.
Motion in second. I think we've had discussion. Any further? Seeing none. All those in favor? Chair, that's seven zero. Next budget is 19, emergency management.
The emergency management budget, we are requesting an increase of $1,777 over the current fiscal year. This increase is all in personal services, is, and is a 3% increase for the Emergency Management Director, Tom Walsh. Main expenses within this budget, under contractual services, there's a $10,000 line item for the Emergency Operations Center, which is at the Public Safety Building. And this is used to service, upgrade, and maintain the equipment within the control center. We also have a $16,000 line item for the emergency notification system, which is the reverse 911. The total budget request for fiscal '26 is $94,030.
Questions from the council? Councilor Dombrowski?
With materials and supplies, I see that through the first half of the year, we only had $179.
Yep.
Do you know why that is?
I, I think it's just, nothing's come up that's been urgent to, to either fix or replace or to spend the money on, so.
Because I just wondered why we would just continue to budget that at 3,000. I mean, I see that two years ago, at 24, it was 3,000 even, which just seems kind of an odd number. And then the year before, that was 2493. So it just seemed, it seems like an outlier, right? So I just wonder if we need to budget that much for it?
Any other questions from councilors on this budget?
I'm surprised contractual services has stayed so level. Just that it's always $30,000.
I, I know in the notification system that they have shopped around and one of the systems that we were using maybe two or three years ago was starting to get pricey. So that, so they ended up looking around and going with a new notification system, which is working just as well as the old system.
And I'm not, I'm not even questioning that. I'm more just saying like it's, it's weird to see consistent $30,000 payments for something that either they go up or not, but it seems fine.
Is that a multi-year contract, do you know, Tim?
Excuse me?
Is that a multi-year contract that you?
I, I believe it is, yes.
Three.
Three? That could, that could be the answer possibly. Anything further from councilors? Would entertain a motion.
I move that the council consider approving the emergency management budget as presented. Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Chair, that is seven zero. Next budget is.
If I can also add on that one, that Tom Walsh is great about getting grants, too. Gets lots of grants for, you know, things, barriers for the Fourth of July parade, that we don't have to go and spend money to rent or something. He's getting those for us, lighting for the, for the, the lights to light up the common after the Fourth of July fireworks. And then bigger grants, working with FEMA and MEMA and things like that. So there's a lot of grants this position brings in, so I'm very pleased with it.
Thank you very much, and Councilor Dombrowski?
If I could just add one point onto that, I think that's really important context for us to have and hearing also about the revenue that's being generated from the prior budget with the alarms and signals. I'm wondering how we can, in years, in future budget years, indicate in some way that, I mean, the revenue to me sounds like, seems like one that should obviously be on there to understand, okay, this is what the spend is, but here's the offset.
Right.
You know, that makes sense. But when you're talking about things like that, it kind of, I think, also helps to better justify or provide the value-add to a particular department budget. So I don't know how we could incorporate that.
We may be able to add a line underneath that. I know that in your presentations, you do talk about, like, particularly in the inspectional services is going to talk about the big revenue that comes in there.
Yeah.
But maybe we could add that into the.
A note on the front page.
Or in the front page or something.
Because anyone looking at this, I mean, especially if you're at the council, but you're hearing this presentation necessarily, you wouldn't know that. And so all budgets are not necessarily created equal, you know, so, I mean, building department, for instance, that's, that's, can be a significant revenue generator. And, but I don't think we have that context here, which I think would be helpful.
Right.
Kind of go on.
I think it's a great point, we can make sure that happens.
Thanks.
Okay, speaking of revenue generation, we have budget number 20, inspectional services.
The inspectional services budget, we're recommending that this budget be increased $18,385 over the current fiscal year. This increase is all in personal services, is for contractual and negotiated increases. Main expenses within this budget, vehicle allowance, $8,100, which is a contractual item. The printing line item, $1,500, which is used to print various applications. I do want to point out that this budget does collect revenue, or this department does collect revenue. Over the past couple fiscal years, this has been a cash cow for the town. In fiscal 2023, we collected $1,358,000. In fiscal '24, we collected over $2 million. And so far, year-to-date, we're almost at $500,000, which is through after year. The total budget request for fiscal '26 is $506,867.
Questions from councilors on inspectional services budget? Councilor Butler?
Is the step-up for every member of the department looks like they got stepped up? Is that a longevity thing or was that a contract negotiation?
Contract negotiations.
Okay.
So it's a call, call of initiative.
Okay.
Any other questions on this budget? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that this council approve the inspectional services budget as presented by Mr. Gill. Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Chair, that is seven zero. Budget 27 is Recreation Department.
Recreation Department, we are requesting an increase of $5,322 over the current fiscal year. This increase is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increase. The, but this budget is covered from fees generated by the recreation programs. And what we do is we charge the programs and activities account, the cost of this person's salary. We take that money out of the revolving account and put it into the general fund to, to basically offset the cost of this department to the tax levy. That in fiscal '24, we collected about $640,000 and we expended $645,000. So it was pretty, pretty well matched up revenues to expense. The current balance in the revolving fund for this department is $100,000. I do want to point out that this budget is the salary of the Recreation Director. He also oversees the building on Albion Street, that's the Cultural Center. And he also oversees the Civic Center also. The total budget request for fiscal '26 is $136,136.
Questions from the council? Councilor Dombrowski?
So when we're talking about Mr. McGrath, his all-in is the 138, 13 and change. But as, as you point out, Mr. Gill, he also oversees Albion Cultural Exchange, which we get revenue from separately, right?
We're not really getting revenue from that, to speak of, no.
Nothing of?
Not, nothing yet.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it would be prudent to kind of apportion his salary, his comp across more than one department?
Well, put the Albion, it kind of is managed in at this department, I haven't put it in the.
You just kind of tucked it under.
Yeah. For no raise.
Right, well, and that's, that's the thing, right? I'm just trying to think about this. I mean, I think Mr. McGrath is, is a significant asset to the town.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I just want to make sure that his work is getting recognized, especially, again, because another of these budgets, which seems important that we have this revenue generation that's coming in, that makes it almost like a budget-neutral.
Exactly.
You know, proposition, which to me is on different footing than a lot of the other budgets that are costing the taxpayers money.
When you were talking about revenue, Kevin, is that revenue from programs in the parks, revenue from the Americal programs in the Americal as well?
Exactly, correct.
Does it include the rent that Boys and Girls Club pays, or is that separate?
That's separate. That goes into a separate account, and we use those, some of those funds to offset the DPW budget when it's presented. There, there is a line item that shows how much from rental fees is being used to offset the DPW budget.
Okay, so.
So this is just, this is just programs and.
More pure recreational fees is what we're looking at here. Thanks for that explanation. Did you have something down there, Councilor Butler?
Yes. It was less of a question and more of, you know, just addressing an overall concern. I think Mr. McGrath does a fantastic job. But this is, again, this is the third or fourth budget that we've. fourth budget that we've come across that every, you know, it seems like everybody who has a full-time position got a step increase. And I just want to make sure that as we, you know, we're done on contract negotiations for now, but as we present, and this is my old FinCom days, as we present salary increases as 3% or whatever, that if we also give everybody a step increase, it creates, you know, it creates a difficult salary increase across the board. So everybody that looks like it, these all look like they're 3% raises, but they're 3% or COLA's plus step, which leads you to a 4, 4.5. This is the same problem we see, I know we're not allowed to talk about it, in the schools' budget, which is not in our purview, but they do present to us. But so, just this, it's the step increases that I think we have to be aware of and cognizant of as a board here, when we're looking at, when we're thinking about personal services line items.
Any other questions from councilors? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the Recreation Department budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Budget Number 27, the Recreation Department budget as presented.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Cherry, that's 7-0. Budget 36 is Streetlights.
The Streetlight budget, we are recommending a decrease to this budget of $10,000. Seven years ago, the Light Department obtained a state grant where they were able to replace all the town's streetlights with LED streetlights, generating savings at that time, seven years ago, of $25,000 to the town. This budget went from $213,000 down to $188,000. We asked and they agreed to give us some of that savings, because we are going to receive another $10,000 next year, minimum, potentially $20,000. So when they obtain the grant for the replacing of the streetlights, there were capital costs that they needed to recover. So that's why we are paying back to the Light Department, basically, those capital costs for the switchover. That will be paid off next year, so we'll be able to generate more savings to this budget next year also.
So this is, that's a capital buy-down, so next year is the last year, did you say?
Next year is the last year that the capital costs will all be recouped by the Light Department, so we'll see the full savings, which will be an additional $10,000 to $20,000 above the $10,000 that's saved this year.
Because we're still being billed for energy?
Correct.
Okay, just curious. Any questions from the councilors? Counselor Cherry?
I just want to say, you know, in my years on FinCom and Town Council, I've been like waiting for this account to start coming down, so this is kind of an exciting milestone, given the investment we made.
Yes, it is.
Glad to see that we're starting to see a reduction here.
I told Kevin it was a retirement gift to me. Tell him to knock off 10.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Budget Number 36, the Streetlights budget as presented.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Did I get you there, Counselor Carney? Okay, sorry, I missed you. 7-0, Cherry. We're on a roll. Next budget is Number 38, Historical Commission.
The Historical Commission budget, we are requesting level funding. The total budget request for fiscal '26 is $2,000.
Any questions from the councilors on the annual $2,000 budget for the Historical Commission? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. That's mostly for the work they have to do under the bylaw when folks want to do demonstrations.
Advertising for meetings and any type of signage replacement that they...
So, as you know, we're not a Community Preservation Act community, so we have no tax levy to help restore historic structures. What we've had to do over the last few years is just do it on an ad hoc basis by using ARPA funds. Frankly, the only reason a lot of the historical structures in this town are in the process of being restored is because we had the benefit of being able, and the decision by the council to use ARPA funds. The Historical Commission has never had, to my knowledge, a budget to consult with a preservation expert, or to go out and get repair estimates, and I talked to you about this. Your advice was maybe the best way to handle that would be as a warrant article at town meeting?
Correct. Where if it was built into the budget and not used, it would just close out at the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
Where if it was done in an article, it could sit there until it's needed to be used, that it would revolve year after year and stay there.
Because my concern, now that the ARPA money has been allocated, and we're not a CPA community, we're back to where we were before, which is either dealing with historic structures on an ad hoc basis, or candidly, the town has neglected to repair many of our historic structures. And I would like to see a situation where our subject matter experts, the Historical Commission, would at least be in a position where they could consult with preservation experts to find out whether something could be restored or needs to be replaced, and also would have the monetary means to go out and procure repair estimates. I mean, the council decided to allocate $10,000 to get a repair estimate for the Soldiers' and Sailors Memorial, but if we didn't have the ARPA money, we wouldn't have had that done. I mean, it wasn't done for a considerably long period of time. So I would like to explore that a bit more, maybe for the Springtown meeting, because I would like the Historical Commission to be able to play more of a prominent role in helping to restore our historic structures in the town. That's all I have, Chair McLean.
Thank you, counsel. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Dabrowski?
Having been a former liaison to the Historical Commission, the issue of the budget had come up, I think, at multiple meetings over a couple of years period at least. I don't know if Counselor Vincent, you had the same experience? And there was talk about increasing this budget, but as I had explained it, these are really, these are really operating budgets, and if there was something that was more targeted, that the Historical Commission was interested in pursuing, then I said, you know, rather than give you, you know, a 5% increase or whatever to this budget, I'd like to know what that project is, and then we can look at ways to fund this. I think that the challenge I have is, I agree with you, Counselor Vincent, that, you know, we're not a Community Preservation Act community, right, currently? But we also haven't had the Historical Commission come before us and present any ideas or plans or anything of the sort. So we've never had anything that's come before us that has ever been met with resistance, we just haven't had it. And the Soldiers' and Sailors Monument, that was really your efforts, that is how we got to that point, more than anything, I would say. So I would really encourage the Historical Commission to think about, I'll call it a strategic plan, a strategic way of approaching things over the next few years, and then we can look at it from a warrant article perspective, potentially, or some other ways, you know? Maybe it gets wrapped into a capital request. I mean, there are any number of ways we can do it, but I do think we are remiss in not having a Historical Commission that is coming before us more often with that level of forward thinking. So I'd encourage them to think about ways in which they want to see how we can preserve, you know, especially our architecture, but our assets across the town. I feel like that's, to your point, always, Counselor Vincent, subject matter experts, they are, and, or presumably, right? So I want to, I'd love to see them be more engaged with us on that, and then I think we can have a robust discussion about what that looks like. But I feel like, you know, we're doing too much of the quarterbacking, potentially, otherwise, and through budgeting, I don't, operating budgets, I don't think that's the way to do it. But I agree with you, I think we have a really, frankly, a historical crisis here, in that we're losing a lot, and there really isn't much preservation going on at all. And even the new construct that's going up doesn't really seem to have any nod to the historical significance of our town, or even the sighting of where these buildings are going. But I think that also requires a pretty active Historical Commission to come to us on these issues, and I'm confident that there would be an appetite for additional funding if and when that occurs, but I've not seen it.
Any other comments, questions? On that, I would, just point of clarification, I would say that it was last year that $300,000, I believe it was, was not ARPA for the Soldiers' and Sailors, it was in capital planning. And that year, instead of doing 2.1, perhaps we did 2.4, if my memory serves. So there is a methodology for taking a project like that that is historical and putting it in through capital planning. You missed last meeting, we did have a Historical Commission here last meeting, we had a little difference of opinion. I don't know, you know, how much the subject matter experts were listened to, but I won't rehash all that, but they definitely did come here and talk about preservation of windows as opposed to new windows. So maybe in the future, this can be worked out for future councils. Counselor Butler?
I also, I think this budget is fine, sort of as-is, staying as-is. I truly don't think we have a huge problem with historical preservation in this town in terms of what's being preserved, and like, again, if we're going to talk about like the new developments, not keeping, let's not kid ourselves that Foundry Street and Converse were like architectural gems that needed to be preserved. I think that one of the things we need to like make sure of is, like, if anything, I worry that Wakefield, frankly, is a little too historically preservationist, or too devoted to memorials of all sorts. I mean, if you look, the number of things we have that are named memorials, let's live for the living, not the memorials.
I don't think anything on Foundry Street was on the National Historic Register either. I'd say there are some differences in the buildings in town.
Just to be clear, when I'm saying that, I'm not saying that there was preservation of the buildings that existed, I'm saying that the new architecture gives a nod to architecture that may have previously existed, not a warehouse building, I'm saying, but there's a lot of really unique architecture across our entire community, and ways in which that can be incorporated, or, you know, inspiring of the architecture that we see going up, we don't see a lot of that, is my point. And I think there's the opportunity to have new and 21st century buildings, but also not being, you know, not stripping, you know, the character of the community. And there are a lot of residential buildings, a lot of homes, when they're redone, have the architecture completely stripped of them. And I think they don't have a lot of guidance, candidly, in terms of what to do, but beautiful grand homes, even if they're split up into multiple condos, for instance, you know, what had been beautiful windows or other detail is just completely stripped, and so these buildings become kind of bastardized, and they're not what they used to be. And I'm not saying that we have to require that they be to the T, but there's not a lot of guidance and direction. We see it even in the downtown corridor as well. When there's a new building going up, it's as if nothing, you know, previous is respected in any way. So I'm not looking to live in the 50s, but I'm also, you know, looking to have a little bit of character, I guess, if you will.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. And the only thing I would augment to that is, yes, the Soldiers' and Sailors Memorial was, went through capital planning and was passed at town meeting. What's significant about that, it was passed unanimously at town meeting. So there's clearly a desire in town to preserve our historic structures. The problem with that memorial is, it only got started as far as getting a repair estimate because we had to use ARPA funds. My concern is if we didn't have ARPA funds available two and a half years ago, we'd still be in a situation where that memorial would be deteriorating, and we wouldn't even started to go out and get a repair estimate. I'm clearly not looking to make any changes to this budget tonight, I just want to talk about the need to make sure that we engage our Historical Commission to be able to go out and get repair estimates, consult with, sometimes they need to consult with a preservation expert before they can put something together to bring before the council, so that we can make sure that we continue to preserve our historic structures. And Counselor Butler, what I will say to you is that when we have the time capsule that we put into the Soldiers' and Sailors Memorial, and we encourage the folks to open it up in 2102, which is the 200th anniversary of the dedication of the memorial, people will remember your name, because you'll be in the time capsule. That's all I have, Chair.
You'll be immortalized.
Okay, on this $2,000 budget, anything else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So I move that we approve Budget Number 38, Historical Commission budget as presented, following robust discussion.
Motion seconded. No further discussion, all those in favor? Cherry, that is 7-0. We can now move to the next budget. Mr. Gill?
Next budget is the unemployment budget. We are requesting level funding over the current fiscal year. This budget is split into two line items, $25,000 for town unemployment, and $50,000 for the school unemployment. Total budget request is $75,000.
Questions from councilors on the unemployment budget? Looks like we're doing okay here. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I think this is one that probably for years, we've done it this way, and it's fine, but we typically overallocate to what the town's experience is, and sort of underallocate to what the school's experience is, and hopefully we get it somewhat close, is there?
This budget is split based on payroll. School payroll is basically 2/3.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's...
And town is 1/3. And historically, the town is under, and the school is right around.
And I'm sure I've asked that question in the previous bunch of years. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Budget Number 41, the unemployment budget as presented.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Cherry, that is 7-0. Budget Number 42 is Reserve Fund.
Reserve Fund budget, we are requesting level funding for next fiscal year. This budget is used for unforeseen, underbudgeted, or unbudgeted expenses and emergencies. The total budget request for fiscal '26 is $400,000.
Questions from councilors? Counselor Dabrowski?
Just given that our past experience has been that we've not come close to the 400, is it fair to say, Mr. Mayo, that this is really just intended to be a means of access to funds without having to go to town meeting, if the need arises between spring and fall?
Correct.
I mean, otherwise, it's just...
Right, and I think it's also part of our financial policy that unforeseen things happen. Probably at some point, want this to be up, you know, probably a little bit higher, probably another $100,000 higher, as a cushion, but I'm not asking that to tell you, I think we're okay, but that's, it's there for those unforeseen circumstances. We have had years where we've had, we've hit it. Our philosophy the last few years has been that we will have a article in the Springtown meeting if we know of something, like fire department overtime, for instance. We do a separate article instead of going through here, because that seems more, we know, it's not unforeseen, we know what's coming, so it seems more in the spirit of this.
So what sort of expenditures would constitute, you know, the 235 or the 97,000?
Which would constitute what, I'm sorry?
The 235,000 in fiscal '23 or the 97,024? Like, what would be like examples of people watching?
There's always a few, I do it in the annual report in November, and my mind is bad, so I can't.
It is documented in the annual report.
It's all documented at town meeting, so it would be...
Retirements, if there are buyouts that...
Buyouts and retirements in departments.
That they're not embedded into each individual budget, and if a person retires and they have sick leave buyback, it's over and above what's in the budget, we go to the reserve on something like that.
Advertising fees and Board of Appeals and Planning Board always seem ones that go over, too. One year on June 10th or 15th, we had a squirrel take out the transformer at the fire station. That was a $60,000 thing that got hidden here. I can't think of others, frequent flyers will talk them ahead.
Sometimes legal, if...
Sometimes legal, yeah.
The past couple of years have been...
Very good.
Very good, but prior to that, we had to use reserve fund there.
But I think it is good to keep it, frankly.
Are you good with that?
I am.
Okay. Counselor Cherry?
Just a quick observation, I mean, in the situation of the squirrel issue, I mean, the issue is if you don't have the reserve fund, we effectively have to call a special town meeting to allocate funds to be able to do that. And so, you know, I agree, this is an important flexibility. is an important flexibility that we have. And, you know, the good thing about it is that if we don't spend the money, it does revert back to the general fund. So we're not, you know, we're not encumbering dollars that can never be used again if we don't spend them.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I just said that we're not encumbering those dollars, but we are encumbering the taxpayers by having them pay those dollars now for expenditures that, if recent history is an indication, we haven't actually expended. And so it's another means by which, we talked a lot about revolving accounts, for instance, with the school in the past. And it is just another means by which we're taking more tax dollars from the taxpayer and then likely not using them, and then having them flow back into a pot. You know, so I don't think it's completely accurate to say that they're, you know, they're not encumbered. The people that are having to pay this are encumbered.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I think, though, the way that we set our tax increase every year, so if we don't spend the funds, they basically roll back into free cash. The balance of free cash then factors into the policy that we use to set the tax levy increase each year. So I do think that it flows back. You know, if we don't spend $400,000, that's $400,000 that goes into free cash, which then factors into that calculation that we've used for the last couple of years. So, you know, I certainly, you know, get that, you know, we're budgeting dollars that may or may not be spent. But, you know, to the extent that we don't spend them, we do have another account that factors into the way that we set tax rates in the following year. So I don't think it's fair to say that the dollars just disappear.
I did not say that.
No, and again, not...
But the policy that you spearheaded, that you're referring to, has led to taxing to the max every year, notwithstanding the fact...
It has not, actually. One year it did, one year it didn't.
Notwithstanding the fact that we ended up having, you know, reserves that were nowhere near what had been budgeted. They're far below that, is my point. So it's another way in which you're saying, well, if you want to take the year that it was slightly below taxing to the max, that was offset by the fact that the reserve fund had been overbudgeted. So then that provided the additional dollars pursuant to your formula. But it's still dollars out of people's pockets, is my point.
Again, I would just also make the point, it's not my formula. It was approved by the council by, I think, a five to two vote.
That you spearheaded. That's right.
Yep. And got four other counselors to vote for it.
It's nice to be able to count to four.
Or five.
Or five, right. Any other questions from the counselors on the reserve fund budget item? Seeing none, I would accept the motion.
So I move that we approve the budget number 42, the reserve fund budget.
Second.
Motion and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor? Cherry, that is 7-0.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's six to one. That is a no from Counselor Dombrowski, Cherry, for the record. Next budget is professional medical.
Yes. Last budget, professional medical. We are requesting level funding. This budget is mainly used for new hire physicals, but it can also be used for current employee physicals, pre-employment physicals, police and fire physicals, which are more extensive than a regular town employee's physical. Mandatory Department of Transportation physicals for employees with CDL licenses. We do approximately 30 a year at $100 each. Also could include return-to-work physicals. The total budget request for fiscal '26 is $15,300, with $11,500 coming from tax levy, $1,900 from the water enterprise, and $1,900 from the sewer enterprise.
Questions from counselors? Counselor Butler?
Did they get all their checkups in the spring? Because we haven't really spent much money so far.
Yeah, they usually do.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve budget number 44, the professional medical department budget as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All opposed. Cherry, that one is 7-0. I thank you both very much for...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Being here this evening and providing great answers to the questions.
See you next week.
Yes, two weeks.
Not next week.
Two weeks. We don't do this weekly. We have gone through licenses, I believe, which would move us forward to approval of donations. We have item 8A for the library.
You might have to refresh your Govenda.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it. I mean, it might go vendor.
It was on the website, but I think you need to refresh your Govenda. But I can tell you the one on the library...
Why don't you tell me about it?
It's pretty easy.
Yeah, I like easy. That's good.
So at our last meeting, we did approve a donation in the amount of $18,000.
Yes.
For the Blossom fundraiser. It was actually for $1,800, which seemed to make a lot more sense to me at this time of year, as things trickled in. So I would like the town council to make that correction for this particular.
Okay, and we would...
Are we voting a save?
Would we vote that?
No, you're accepting less.
Would you like a vote on that, Town Administrator?
I would, yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the library donation in the amount, the correct amount?
$1,800.
Of $1,800?
So I move that we accept the library donation in the correct amount of $1,800 with our thanks.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to see whether Wakefield residents pony up a bit more next year and get us to that $18,000.
Well, this was something the chamber for. I think they actually did get more last year. I think this was just something that straggled.
Yeah, this was a straggler. There was another larger amount.
I'm going to get sharply poked at the next library trustee.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion seconded, I believe. All those in favor? All opposed. Cherry, that's 7-0. And then we had another donation...
The other one is from Green Team Junk Removal. This is the business that handles our recycling day every year. This coming year will be June, oh, this was, last year was June 29th. It'll be June as well this year. I'll check my calendar and remind everybody the end of the date. But they did donate, the ESC, $500 for committee activities.
I'll entertain a motion. Any discussion by the council on this? Seeing none, I would gladly entertain a motion to accept the $500 from the Green Team Junk Removal Company for the ESC.
I move that we accept the donation as described.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. Cherry, that's 7-0. We have now moved from donations to item nine, approval of minutes for January 13th, 2025 town council meeting. They have Ben and Govenda. Anybody have any corrections or anything needs to be discussed? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that this council approve the meeting minutes from January 13th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. Cherry, that is 7-0.
Abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cherry. I keep forgetting to check with my vice chair. That is 6-0 with one abstention because Counselor Dombrowski was not with us at that meeting. Makes perfect sense. Item 10, announcements. Do we have any announcements from counselors today? Counselor Butt?
Sure, just a couple of things. So a few of us, Counselor Butler, Counselor Chines, myself, and Steve went to the Mass Municipal Association meeting on Friday and Saturday. Always a great annual meeting and conference, 1,400 people throughout the state. Just some highlights, just to talk about, they had a whole alley dedicated to electric vehicles, including a bus and construction vehicles, which was very cool to see. There was some interesting talk about public art, Counselor Dombrowski, that I'm excited to talk about with the Economic Development Committee. And then lots of talk about housing and conflict and communications. But the most exciting thing was I had three different people, when we were talking to vendors who work with municipalities, come up and rave about our town employees. Three different employees raving, oh, they're great to work with, which was very nice to hear. The minute they saw that my name tag said Wakefield, they raved about our town employees. I just wanted to share that, and I'll tell you, Steve, later, who it was.
Excellent.
So on that, if it's a good, you know, Wakefield pride itself on a lot, just a reminder, as Counselor Dombrowski said earlier, we have our town elections on April 22nd. So just add that to your calendar. And also on our website, I noticed that we have a call out to join our town committees. So if you want to be a part of all the amazing work that we do in Wakefield and volunteer for a town committee, applications are due February 4th. And there's more information on our website. Just two more announcements. One is the HRC, the Human Rights Commission, had an amazing MLK Day celebration. And part of their event was having a service project. So they are collecting hats, gloves, and new socks. And there's drop-off locations throughout the town, at the civic center, at town hall, at the schools. And they're collecting those until February 7th. So if you have gently-used hats and gloves and new socks to drop off, please do that. And then, this is real-time news, but I got an email that Inspire Cafe is having their ribbon cutting and grand opening on Saturday, February 1st, from 10:00 to 4:00 a.m. So please join Inspire Cafe at 411 Main Street. Breaking news. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Any other announcements from counselors? Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, I just want to echo Counselor Butt. You know, it really was a great couple of days at the MMA conference. You know, a couple of other highlights that I found, the availability of the Housing Works program and some additional dollars through that was exciting news with the passage of the Affordable Homes Act last year. And something I hope, you know, Mr. Mayo, as we look at, you know, property around Butler Ave and in the Hurd School that we consider. There were also some really, really great budget panels that I was able to sit on. You know, one excellent panel from a couple of school superintendents and employees that talked about some of the challenges with school funding that, you know, certainly feel very relevant to Wakefield as well. We heard from the governor and lieutenant governor on their budgets. And while, you know, the local aid numbers and Chapter 70 numbers are not quite what I would have hoped and hoped that they get bumped up as we go through the legislative process. I was incredibly excited to hear the governor's proposal to increase Chapter 90 funding by 50% per year for the next five years. So Chapter 90 is funding for road repairs in local communities. And certainly, we could find some ways to use that money if it comes through the legislative process. Second thing, I just want to offer my congratulations to the Galvin Middle School Drama Club for an incredibly successful and just incredible performance of Frozen Junior. I'm a little biased, but I was a big fan of King Afghar and thought he was outstanding. But everyone did a great job in the play. It really is a testament to the talent we have in our schools. And also just the dedication of the incredible numbers of teachers, administrators, and parents and community members who volunteered to make that happen. It really was an enormous effort and just one of those, one of those days where you are, you're proud to be from Wakefield. Finally, I just wanted to maybe offer a little preview of a couple of agenda items that I asked the chair to include in our, in our next meeting. With Steve's retirement, which while I still, you know, don't like talking about that in any way, shape, or form because I don't know that I'm quite ready for you to retire, I did ask that we include two items on our next agenda. One is to hear from Mr. Mullen on just some of the sort of charter and legal implications for a town council as we think about doing a town administrator search and hiring process, just to make sure that we are kind of level set on, you know, both what our responsibilities are, but also some of the sort of constraints. And then a second agenda item, just to start focusing on what we think some of the next steps might be. And so as we think about that, you know, there are three questions that, you know, kind of I've been thinking about in my head, and I want to put them out there today just so that people have a chance to think about them over the next two weeks and ruminate on them before the discussion in two weeks. The first is thinking about the timing of addressing the transition in light of the fact that we do have an election in April, and some of us may or may not be here after that. The second is trying to understand just from a sort of responsibility and kind of priority-setting process for the town administrator. We've put in a number of provisions in the current town administrator contract that lay out the responsibilities and expectations for the position. And it probably behooves us to think about whether those are the right things to expect of the next town administrator, or similar to how we talked about, you know, looking at policies and procedures frequently, if we want to take another look at that and kind of modify those as we move forward. And then finally, thinking about, as we consider a process, how we want to think about working through that process with both current town employees as well as non-town employees. So I put those out there. Again, these are questions that I've been thinking about and hope we can have some discussion in a couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other announcements from counselors? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Steve, it's imperative that you and I, one of us, at every single meeting makes an announcement of Save the Date.
Oh, okay.
Silver and Sellers Memorial dedication will be on May 31st, from 12:00 to 4:00. From 12:00 to 2:30 will be an opportunity to walk around the common. We have at least six or seven reenactor groups coming, as well as musicians. We've got the high school students engaged in the process. We're working with Dr. Lyons on the middle school and the elementary school children as well. The Little Red Schoolhouse will be open. Hart Short House will be open. We are inviting the governor and/or lieutenant governor and the congressman to come. And we'll give more specifics as we go along. But starting at 2:30, we are going to have the reenactors march from the cemetery over to the memorial. And then we're going to have a formal rededication where we turn, Steve, the town administrator, will turn the town over to a certain Civil War reenactor group, who then has a nice 20-minute program where they do a formal rededication, and then they turn it back over to the town. So we'll give more specificity as we get closer. I do want to thank Steve, you and your staff, who are tremendously, and helping me with, you know, Jen putting together the list of who's doing what, making sure that all the infrastructure. WCET is also providing assistance. This is coming together in a manner that I never could even have dreamed of. It's really going to be a nice thing for the town. So we'll remind you all at each meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Dombrowski?
Just want to remind everyone that we do have elections coming up in April. There's still time to pull papers for any number of positions. So I would encourage anyone who's interested in doing so to give it some serious thought, because there's a lot of opportunity to make real impact within your community. I also wanted to wish everyone connected with St. Joseph's School a happy Catholic Schools Week this week. We're fortunate to have great public education within our town, but also great parochial education. As a product of a Catholic school education, I can attest to how many of the benefits, you know, you can receive from that kind of an education. I know St. Joseph's does a wonderful job, both as a parish community, but also within the school itself. And so I wish them congratulations on Catholic Schools Week and continued success going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else at the moment? All right, I just have a couple. I want a second. Oh, I'm sorry, would you like to?
I have a couple of us, okay.
Go right ahead.
June 14th is the recycling day. I had to look at my calendar this year, number one. And number two, I did enjoy the MMA convention. I always do. It was an interesting venue this year. It's always been at the Heinz. This year, it was at the Seaport, which was a lot of walking, a lot of walking. I did 11,000 steps each day, and I was tired with my knees. But it was a really good, the Chapter 90 was a bright spot, maybe the only bright spot in the state budget this year. What we're looking at right now for Wakefield is the net increase on state aid from last fiscal year to this fiscal year is $187,000 and some change, or 1.66%. That's, I would like a lot more. So I will be the forecasting committee. They already have this. So we'll be looking at that. And it's, so it is, you know, we do need to be improving when we look at items this year, so.
Yes, our expenses aren't going up 1.66.
I wish they were.
Yes, sir. Counselor Carney? Yes, sir. Counselor Carney?
Yeah. When do we get the opportunity to speak with, speak with our state legislators? Because it kind of bothers me that we're getting, we're getting smoked on the state aid. And then they'll come out and announce all of these grants and all of this money they're going to give out like candy. So they go into the special interest group, give them money to the special interest group, and they're not giving it to the town meeting and our, the town legislature to make decisions on it. And it's wrong, totally wrong. So I, I don't know when we play that. It's, it's kind of late now.
Well, no, no, this is the House One budget, this was just filed Thursday.
Can we, can we set up a meeting with them?
I can invite them to a meeting with the chairman. Try to, try to get him in.
Anytime.
Okay.
Anytime. Counselor Chines?
If I could also sort of add to that, you know, one of the benefits of being part of the MMA is that they do a lot of advocacy around particularly local aid and chapter 70. And, and I have the opportunity to serve on the Fiscal Policy Committee for the MMA. And this is very much part of what the MMA is focused on. So, you know, once the governor's budget gets released, the House budget at the end of January, between now and, you know, whenever the legislature finishes working on the budget, there is a ton of advocacy that the MMA does on behalf of Wakefield and all of the member communities to, you know, push for increases and all of that. And, and I will say, you know, two areas of focus. One are the fact that obviously our costs are increasing more than by, than by the 1.6% that Mr. Mayo mentioned. And we're not unique in that regard, you know, we're seeing that in every community because of labor costs, health insurance costs, and so forth. The second issue is that, you know, there is, I think, kind of broad recognition that the chapter 70 formula has not been working over the last couple of years because of some of the changes in, in educational costs. And so that is another piece, that is another initiative that the MMA is working on on behalf of communities as well, is making sure that there's both a sustainable minimum increase in aid in chapter 70 to every community each year, but also looking at that underlying formula so that it can be addressed, not in a piecemeal way going forward, but addressed in a way that is more systematic as we move forward.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the results.
Yeah.
You know, the MBTA zoning issue came, it was attached to the budget. And all of a sudden, well, we're not responsible? They're responsible. Years ago, they cut the House representation down, saying to make it more efficient, okay? We used to have a representative for Wakefield that would speak to Wakefield. Well, they cut it down to be more efficient, okay? They all got second jobs. The leadership in there is making a fortune, okay? And they all have second jobs, too, the leaders. So I mean, somewhere along the line, I want these people to be responsible, but I don't want to be making reparations to the, to the Native Americans on, on my tax dollars. And that's what they speak about. That's who they go. They try to get the various groups to come and support them. And that's wrong. They should be supporting the town of Wakefield, town of Winchester, town of, town of Stoneham. And, and we should all be, all be speaking up together. So, in fact, I mentioned Doug. Doug asked me if I was going to the meeting, and I, I said, I'm not sure. I thought you, they may be part of the problem. I guess the MMA is not, it's not part of the problem, okay? But the issue is, we should speak to these people before they speak to all of our special interest groups here and get, take our money away and take, take the right of the town meeting to appropriate that money. They're going around us and then getting votes doing that. So I'll call it the way I see it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'd all rather see the cash than promises of grants that may or may not go, come to us. But, that being said, if we're exhausted on announcements, I just had three things kind of quickly. One is to second what Counselor Butt said. I know Counselor Chines was in attendance at the MLK, as was the town administrator. Shout out to Sherri Oaken and Jaz Sutich and all the people that put together a wonderful program for that. Second thing is, on Saturday night, we had a raucous and crowded fundraiser over at the West Side Social Club. I was there, Counselor Carney was there. We were, we were regaled by Paul Augusta, Paul DeAngelo, and Dave Dangerfield Mangan, whom some of you may know. And it was, it was a packed house. And both the WSSC and the parade committee worked together and shared the spoils, which will, I think, it was probably a pretty good take. And will benefit the parade. And that was a, that was a very enjoyable and very interesting event. The other thing is relative to the announcements on, on succession planning. It will be on the agenda as noted for next meeting, take two, 10. I intend to start with Mr. Mullen, then go to Mr. Mayo, and then open it up to all of you. I watched our meeting of October 21st. We went on for quite a bit of time. I know we have a lot of opinions. We'll have opinions about timing. We'll have opinions about the items. Obviously, the items that Counselor Chines mentioned are not exclusive. So we'll have a long discussion. You may want to bring your trail mix that evening, because we might have other things on the agenda in addition to that, and I'm sure that'll be taking us a little bit of time. That's all I had. Any other announcements from counselors? Seeing none. Matter's not anticipated for agenda, is item 11. Seeing none. Item 12 is adjournment. Happy to entertain a motion. Motion from Counselor Carney?
Second.
Second, motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed. Sherry, that's seven zero for adjournment. I am going to call this meeting at, let's look at the watch, 8:30, 7:00 p.m. closed, ended adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.